Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Borgas Council Meeting. In welcoming you here tonight, we acknowledge the Mungula people, the traditional owners of the land on which we meet today. And we pay our respects to the elders, past and present, and extend that respect to other Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people who may be present tonight. In our opening prayer and welcome, Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to grant them a blessing upon the works of this council, to direct and prosperous deliberations to the advancement of this city and for the true and lasting welfare of the people of this municipality. Read out the advisory notices. If you can stand or sit. Emma Feist. Pausia Brizero. Isabella Maxwell. Vincenzo Varachio. My apologies if I got that wrong. Peter Cuthill. Ian Hamilton. Maureen Grimshaw. Bill Hill. Margaret Butson. Margaret Addy. Keith Lynn. Joanna Peppermanos. Jim Carterott. Ask you to remain standing for a moment's silence, please. Thank you. Item four, our attendance record. We have an apology from councillor Oisterman. I believe she is online listening in. But it is an apology being unable to attend the meeting. We have a leave of absence from councillor Inglis. Item five. Councilmember in executive declarations. Five point one, conflicts of interest. Does anyone believe they have a conflict of interest? End is all considered, no conflict of interest. Five point two, does anybody have a gift or a benefit to declare? I've got a little gap, but that's below fifty bucks. Thank you. Six minutes of our previous meeting. Six point one, confirmation of the minutes of the previous ordinary council meeting held on Monday, 70th of July. I have a move in, down by councillor Knox, seconded councillor Klopica. Put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Item six point two, confirmation of the minutes of the special council meeting held on Monday, 24th of July. That was read, just do we have a mover, please? Councillor Simpson, seconded by councillor Todd. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Thank you. Item six point three, confirmation of the minutes of the special council meeting held on Monday, the 31st of July. Do we have a mover? Councillor Pond, Deputy Mayor Pond, my apologies. Let me second it councillor Simpson. Put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Item seven, deputations or presentations, we have none. Eight, petitions, we have none. Nine, matters adjourned or laid on the table, there is nil there as well. Public question time. Do we have any questions? No, thank you. Item eleven, council member activities. Have had some very busy councillors, as usual and as expected. Very active, I would thank you for being part of all those events. Anybody wishes to comment on any of them in particular before we move on? Item twelve, committee reports. Twelve point one, audit and risk committee meeting of 70th of July. We have a recommendation there. Move councillor Klopica, seconded councillor Knox. There's no further. Are you commenting, councillor, or is your light still on? No, I'm a hundred percent. Put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Item thirteen, reports from council offices. Thirteen point one, the office of the chief executive. Thirteen point one point one, CEO's action report. You'll speak to it, see it?
Take this right there, happy to respond to any questions.
Councillor Knox.
Much of the comment as a question, but the, a couple of years ago, the RDA were looking at getting a asylum package deal for people in their area. They might like to explore with them what they did, whether it's still ongoing or whether it's been carried.
Any further questions or comments? In that case, we have a motion, would somebody care to move the recommendation? Councillor Knox, seconded deputy Mayor Pond. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Thirteen point one point two. RDA Australia Air Potential, we have a recommendation. CEO, do you wish to speak or take it as read? Take it as read, any questions? In that case. Of course, councillor Todd has moved the recommendation. Councillor Simpson has seconded it. There's no further discussion, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Those against? Motion's carried. Thirteen point two, corporate services. Thirteen point two point one, the monthly budget report for July. We have a recommendation. We take it as read, and any questions? Direct it to the CEO, please, or comments, councillor Knox.
I've got one question, this provision of the doubtful debts of $157,381. I want to find out some details on what those doubtful debts may be.
And we do have some confidential information that we're going to provide councillors later in the agenda. So if you don't mind holding that question until that time, we can provide some information about some of those doubtful debts during that discussion.
Thank you. Any further questions to the CEO? In that case, we have a recommendation that we receive and note the monthly budget report. Do we have a mover, please? Councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Campbell. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Item thirteen point two point two, loan facility. We have a three-part recommendation there. Or if anybody questions, councillor Campbell to the CEO. No? Any questions or comments for the CEO to address? In that case, I'll take the report as read and seek a mover and a second, please. Move councillor Border. Seconded councillor Simpson. If there are no questions, I will put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Thirteen point two point three. Asset accounting policy review. We have a recommendation. If the report is read, if you have any questions, you're moving it, councillor Knox, a question?
Good question.
Question?
What about assets that fall under the various amounts? You're recording somewhere to make sure that those assets aren't protected within the system?
Ask the manager of finance to respond to that one, please.
Thank you. We do sort of, around the debt area, especially mine and equipment out there, tanks or stuff. There's those sorts of things that don't fall into. You'll log that by the areas specifically, necessarily, but each area will have processes for managing assets and that sort of thing. But there's not a centralised register for.
I would have thought that it's important at least, I accept I don't have to go in the asset register. But I think it's important that we have a system of recording these things and making sure that we do still have them, because those sort of things can walk.
Thank you councillor. Any further questions, item thirteen point two, pass through? If you want, I call for a mover of the recommendation. If councillor Border moved, will have a second. Councillor Campbell. And no further questions or comments, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Thirteen point two point four. Entertainment and hospitality policy review. Anybody has any questions, I will direct those to the CEO. Councillor Knox.
I'll apologise upfront if I missed it, but I didn't notice it in here. It's not an issue of distrust either, it's an issue of procedure really. But I assume that the CEO signs off on the director's credit cards. Then who signs off on the CEO's credit card, the mayor?
The chairman, the manager of finance. And I think you bring that to the mayor's attention as well, is that right?
Thank you Cathy, that's a good point.
Yeah, so sorry, director of corporate services and the mayor both signs the transactions on the CEO's credit card.
Thank you for the question councillor. Any further questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll call for a mover of the recommendation that we adopt the updated entertainment and hospitality policy. Move councillor Border, seconded councillor Knox. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Thirteen point two point five, prudential management policy review. Councillor Border, you have a question?
I do, and I'm going to use David's technique. I apologise if I have missed this. We had the challenge with the cottages, the contract. And the same thing sort of repeated itself a little bit with the childcare centre upgrade. If you remember the context where we'd sort of committed to the contractor, circumstances changed and we were a bit landlocked with what we could manoeuvre around. And I just wanted to cover off that this was the right policy to capture something like that. The orders from this committee, I think, had put in there to have an exit strategy of contracts over a million dollars. So I just wanted to clarify, does this, does that clause to have an exit strategy cover off on the concern in the context of those cottages and the childcare contracts? Does that cover off on that?
This instance, I'll get the managers of finance to respond.
Yeah, I think this is an interesting one. Do you, I mean, if you look at the process and all the processes you've set out, the contract, we're probably going to go out to the market. We're considering, especially large contracts. I can, and I don't know that it's not worth investigating, but if you start trying to add clauses in your drop, like standard contracts, that make it easier to get out of those contracts.
Still going.
That will raise the cost of doing work. Yeah, because that raises the risks for contractors. And so, happy to work through, we've just reviewed our contracts, so happy to do a bit of a review of what forces we may be going to have in there that offer some more flexibility. But flexibility tends to mean price for, because it means risk that someone else is taking on. You're transferring risks for one day. So, but definitely, I think, council, what this policy is talking about, I think, is looking at what your strategies are in your processes and in that. But actually having contractual clauses that allow exit is difficult and potentially costly, and especially in a time when we're already dealing with costs that can sort it out, I think. Yeah, more than happy to be.
Thank you, and just further to that. The wording was what the audit and risk committee had said, that what exit strategies exist if circumstances change. And so, not necessarily a get out of jail free card, but I guess predetermined, if that goes, then this and this will follow. And something that is, yeah, the de-risk said for the contractor so that they're not just going to build in another 15% into their costs to compensate. But just, yeah, it just sort of seems that within the time we've been on council, there have been two separate instances where it's like, oh man, to the court with this thing where we would like to manoeuvre, but we can't. So just, and I don't know what it is. And I think I'm glad to have the audit and risk committee point that out. But yeah, if you're going to investigate it and see what you can do, that'd be great.
Thank you councillor, any further comments or questions? If not, so I'll put that recommendation, seek a mover and second. We adopt the updated prudential management policy. Move councillor Border, seconded councillor Campbell, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Item thirteen point two point six, quarterly report for procurement from April to June. Any questions or comments, I'll direct to the CEO to have addressed. Do you have any questions or comments?
I have a comment only about the fact where we are. Still doing the right thing by any public of Wales. While the purchase of the bar, which is great, a lot of purchases made in London.
Thank you councillor. There are no further questions or comments, I'll put that recommendation that we receive and note the quarterly report. Will have a mover, please. Move deputy Mayor Pond, seconded councillor Border, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Thirteen point three, city growth. Thirteen point three point one is the late report, which hopefully everybody has read and received. If there's any questions or comments, I'll, before I call for a mover, direct those to the CEO. Any questions or comments? Councillor Knox.
I welcome these reports. As you know, I've been pressing one of these for a long time. But I'd like to see just a little bit more detail, for example, in the childcare centre. Good little report, but it doesn't give us any detail so we can compare the differences with the previous, same period in the previous year. And I would like to see that when we do these reports.
Sorry, I was jumping while I had wasn't, no? This is the late report.
I precede it, so, all right, this was throwing me out.
Please do.
Well, that's a rough environment, I thought it was late, but it's good that.
Three o'clock, salad.
I'll let the CEO take over on that one.
I might ask the director of corporate services just to inform you this. So it's a late report that we did send out very late this afternoon. And so, some councillors may not have had a chance to see it. We believe it's relatively procedural in nature, but we thought it was appropriate. But I'll get councillor, sorry, director of corporate services to talk to the reason for their request to close the childcare centre for two days.
Thank you, and through the mayor. I'd also like to acknowledge that Joe Velasco is online. Joe is the leader of the childcare centre and the services provided from there. So if there's more detailed questions that you might have, Joe will be able to answer them. But this is procedural in nature, seeking council's endorsement to close the childcare centre for two days. The first day on the 19th of September, the second day on the 30th of November, for the purposes of professional development of the staff within the childcare centre. There have been new, a new learning framework that has been introduced by the federal government under the Australian Children's Education and Care Quality Authority. And we do need to ensure that our childcare educators are up to date with their professional development in order to be able to provide those services. Noting also that our childcare centre is very likely to be audited, certainly early or during the course of 2024. So it is absolutely imperative that all of our educators at the childcare centre do have the updated professional development. The timing of doing the professional development, it is eight hours worth of professional development to try to do that training and professional development after the closure of the childcare centre during meetings of staff which regularly occur between 6pm and 8pm. To try and do that professional development after the childcare centre has closed is quite a significant impost on the staff in terms of their ability after a long day working to be able to take on those, that training and development. And so it is considered prudent to close a centre to ensure that that professional development can actually occur. The reasons for this report coming to you late tonight, unfortunately, through administrative circumstance, it wasn't included in the agenda when the agenda came out last Thursday. We did consider putting it to the next meeting of the council, but that would give insufficient time for the advice to parents of children at the centre. And to delay the training from the two dates that have been identified in the report would then take the training into October and December, which are not months that would lead to an easy closure of the centre. It's this report for you tonight.
Deputy Mayor Pond.
I'm happy to move it. As someone who's worked for the education department for 32 years, this is actually stock standard. All education settings get between two to four days for their professional development. And yes, parents do need the four weeks' notice to be able to arrange other care. So very happy to move it.
Thank you deputy mayor. In that case, if there's no further questions, councillor Simpson, are you seconding it or asking a question?
Well, I'll second it, I don't have a problem with it. As long as the parents, as you said, have given paid notice, I don't have a problem with it either. Back in a second.
Thank you councillor, councillor Klopica.
Just a question, when did we know about this new framework?
Joe, are you there? When did we know about the new framework coming in?
Sorry, when did we know about it?
Yes.
We have known for a few months and we have sort of been trying to fit this into those out of hours meetings that you mentioned Cathy, but it is just proving extremely difficult. And not as, we're not getting the most out of out of hours after a long day, which has brought us to this report. But it is sort of only in the last few months.
Good evening, my councillor. We have a motion, a mover and a second. If there are no further questions or comments, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Thirteen point four, city infrastructure, we have no report. Item fourteen, information decision reports. Fourteen point one, council members. Fourteen point one point one, the mayor's list of engagements. Councillor Border.
I'll just remind back to you to the 78th of July. While the midwifery services review, not expecting verbatim, but just conversations around the community, the concern about giving birth in Waila and staffing levels and that sort of thing of the hospital of if someone's pregnant and want to give birth and a lot of trips to Adelaide and a lot of concern about it. I just wondered if you had any update or if there's anything in process to improve the facility here? I don't know where to start as far as trying to provide feedback.
Thank you councillor for the question. I think I gave a brief report at one of our briefing sessions. I did touch on it then. CEO and I have a meeting with Eddie Hughes tomorrow, which is on my list to ask what's his latest on it. At the time, the response that we were given was basically, it's all about lack of midwives, nothing else that there's a review on. But it is on my list to ask for an update tomorrow when we meet with Eddie. Because yes, that is a month or so ahead. Yeah, and haven't heard anything from either of them.
And thank you for that. And if I can speak candidly, like, is this something that is out of council's scope of influence? Like, is this an Eddie Hughes state government, SA Health?
Totally state government, as I said, CEO might correctly, as I said, it's totally out of our hands as far as their responsibility. Our role is to keep onto them as to what is happening, what's the result of the review? Because the impression I've been under all along from both our meeting and also from what Eddie had said previously, that I would have expected the report finalized and out by now or at least to the government. So I would definitely be asking Eddie tomorrow where are we at? Where are we going to know? And then obviously after tomorrow, even if it's just a brief email to see the outcomes of that. Thank you. Councillor Knox.
I was just wondering with anything that happened with Minerals PHP meeting that impacts on Waila in any way?
My recollection of that one was purely meet and greet. They're in town, just maintaining their relationship, there was nothing vague announcement or nothing else. CEO might add to that, but no. We have had a few meet and greets from different ones lately, just because they're in town and whether they're laying the foundations to make sure we all know each other so that when they come back, there's more to say, but no.
Maybe just through the mayor, just the just the additional comment was that there's been no significant change to the operations at Carrabina, so which is the former Osmineral site. So it's basically business as usual. They're going through the process of transitioning the two companies together, but certainly no indication of any substantive changes to their previous operations.
It was a situation at one stage where they were exploring the opportunity for a smelter. And they went, they had discussions with GFG about it as well in Waila. Might be worth next time you meet with them, ask the question, is there any possibility for that? Or are they going to do a contingency plan, the smelters at Rossby Downs?
Yeah, CEO, through the mayor. No indications at all that they're looking at Waila as a location for a smelter. They're actually, they're existing smelter arrangements, they're looking to expand. So expanding further to north, not relocating here.
And I was also just going to mention that the meeting with the shadow minister, Tim Wetstone, again, he just happened to be in Waila, wanted to catch up, hasn't caught up with either of us. And we have certainly added him to the list whenever we need to send off correspondence on particular matters. And it was quite a worthwhile conversation, saying he hadn't been here before as to where we were going. We have had an acknowledgement from him, part of correspondence, thanking us, but also making sure that he's there if we ever can use him. So he's on the list now. If he wasn't before, he is now on matters. And not just under his area of operation, but because of other ministers, even in the current government that he knows, that he can advocate for us as well. If there's no further questions. We have a recommendation there to receive and note the mayor's engagements. Is that move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor Border? I'll put the motion, those in favour. Carrie, thank you. Item fourteen point two. For us to have a city growth, city infrastructure. Item fourteen point two point one, the monthly information report. Questions? Councillor Knox.
I get my timing right now. I just want to look at the reports, just embellished a little bit with some information in terms of actual attendances compared with the previous period. That's for the childcare centre and when it comes to libraries and things like that. Maybe we could also have. Maybe we could also look at, okay, our loan borrowers going up and our loan borrowers going down, membership's going up, membership's going down. Quite some useful information, please.
Thank you councillor. Any further questions or comments? Councillor Knox? Right, councillor Knox has moved the report, do I have a secondary? Councillor Borden? There's no further questions, I'll put that motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Item 15, notices of motion, we have a notice of motion for councillor Inglis, it's in the agenda there. I'll ask for any questions or comments, go right back to the CEO. Deputy Mayor Pond?
Tuesday's the only night I can't do, I've got previous commitments. So there'd be at least two Tuesdays of every single month that I would not be able to make it.
May I ask the deputy mayor a question then? Which Tuesdays would it be? Perhaps tomorrow night?
It's the second and third Tuesday of every month.
So the third Tuesday, if it moved that wrong. Thank you.
Any other night?
Any further, councillor Campbell?
Yes, may I also suggest since we're moving to the high school, when we move to there, would we be able to consider starting at six o'clock? I don't knock off until five officially. Normally don't get out of the building until twenty past, I'm going to struggle Mondays or Tuesdays to get there by five thirty, if it's not in this building. So.
Do you wish to handle this CEO? I mean, this is calling for a report, it's a lot of decision making tonight.
That's correct. So the, yeah, the motion is to call, prepare a report. So we will canvass councillors to get feedbacks, which was just being provided, to inform a report back to council, to take into account when it considers this matter.
Thank you, CEO. Councillor Simpson?
Suggest that perhaps we leave it to be a Wednesday.
Yes. Obviously it's not going to be straightforward. If we just look at the recommendation, at least administration prepares a report, the goes with us all to see what our situations are and then come back with that report. In that case. Sorry.
If I can, through the mayor, the motion is specific requesting that the council meeting shift from a Monday to a Tuesday. If it was council's wish, you could take out those words to a Tuesday and just have it from a Monday for stop and then it could explore other days.
Well, thank you Cathy. Would everybody be happy with the motion being, the recommendation being adjusted? That's the coast councillor Knox, are you moving?
No, I have no issue with it being changed, but if you made it Wednesdays, then I couldn't miss a every second meeting because we have medical appointments in Adelaide.
Well, if we at least put this recommendation through and enable it with the administration to try to find the right answer for us all. In that case councillor Todd, are you moving?
Moving.
Do I have a secondary please? Councillor Borden, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Item 16, questions on notice. Have no questions on notice? Item 17, questions without notice. No, councillor Knox, sorry councillor Tobbika?
Just a couple. Well, it's in December, a raised issue regarding no bus stops at the Forshaw. And we had a response back that there's, as I have advised, that they were going to conduct a review within the next six months, which obviously has expired. I'm just curious if you're aware if that consultation has been undertaken? And if not, can we find out when that occurred?
CEO, take that on notice, that's councillor. Councillor? Oh, sorry.
Tobbika has raised with me the question regarding the placement of the banners along Nicholson Avenue on the Stovey Poles. They're currently promoting the Cutter Fest and he wants to know if we think this is a cost effective use of council resources. As they change a few times during the year, what is the cost of printing, making the banners, putting them up, putting them down? How does the council calculate the return on investment from that?
So with something of that question of that nature, if council wishes to get an answer to that, having the question put on notice would give us the confirmation that council wants the response to that question. I'm happy upon this occasion to take that one and provide an answer. That one will obviously just take a little bit more time than just being able to respond straight up.
Yeah.
Councillor Knox?
First one, a bit sensitive, but I'd like to know how well the current dry zones are working and whether in fact we should be looking at extending the dry zones. There's incidents that are happening on the other side of McDowell Stewart Avenue on a fairly regular basis. I think we might need to have a look at that. And I also wonder whether anybody has ever entertained some discussion with these groups of people to find out, you know, why are they here in Wailah? What are their needs here in Wailah? Would they like assistance to go back to their own country? Just some general conversation with them. They're here in our community. There are some problems that are happening in and around them, so I think we need to explore a little bit. I hope I put that sensitively enough.
They're confident. With the licensing such, can I leave?
Yep. Thank you.
Good, ready now.
So thanks for the question councillor Knox. So yes, there is regular discussion around the effectiveness of the dry zone and the current restrictions on liquor sales. Those discussions occurred the while there's the leadership meeting as well as periodically with the.
Commissioner? The liquor gambling commissioner?
Gambling. He's Suleon?
Yeah, Suleon.
Yeah, sorry, I can never remember that. So the dry zone is effective. The extension that council made is probably what's tracked on 12.
Fifteen months ago.
Feedback that we're getting from both the commissioner and from Safehold is that that is a very useful tool to enable Safehold to address inappropriate behaviour and consumption about the whole in and around that area. There's been no discussion today that I'm aware of, of the merits of expanding the current dry zone to further afield. I'll have to take that question on notice and pose that to both the commissioner and to more specifically Safehold. So I'll take that one on notice. In terms of discussions with the various groups, the various agencies, including Safehold amongst others, do regularly engage in discussion with members of our community around. Particularly the use of things like civic park and Shields Reserve and the areas sort of around the West End Shopping Centre. There have been discussions about the relocation of the ban to country and on a number of occasions that has been facilitated. And discussions are also filled with different members around, in some instances overcrowding in some residential properties. So the various agencies are very much engaged with members of the community around some of those matters. So actively looking to address any concerns, particularly with the ability to return to country.
As councillor Knox, what area are you talking about? Whereabouts?
Talking about the western side of McDowell, sorry. I'm talking about the western side of McDowell Stewart Avenue, the area sort of between, say, the old RIA building and the roundabout.
Thank you. Thank you councillor. Let's see, I'll take that on board. Councillor Todd?
I've still got a couple.
Oh, sorry, sorry councillor.
Under what circumstances can council call out correction services to remove graffiti or pay over graffiti? I had a complaint from the business in George Avenue that said that they didn't get a lot of cooperation from council when they rang. Job has been done, but they apparently weren't reacting with the reaction they got from here.
Sorry.
Just defer to services?
Sorry, from what, under what circumstances can council seek support from who?
Correctional services, the pay table or remove graffiti?
I will take that one on notice. I do and am aware certainly that the rapid removal of graffiti is the best way of treating the removal of graffiti. And so I will take that on notice as to what structures we've got in place for that to occur.
Deputy Mayor Pond?
I can add to that. Council do have a tag buster facility, they've got a little trailer. So when calls are made, that tag buster trailer goes out quite quickly.
And in this particular.
Certainly from an infrastructure point of view, I mean, the methodology that we have is that as soon as a call, and if a call comes in during our normal working hours and when we have staff on shift, staff will go out and remove that straight away. But if the graffiti is going up out of office hours and a call goes in through to the out of hours call service, the response pattern will be different. But what I will do is double check what the service standard is in terms of responding to issues of graffiti and get back to you.
Next one, I'm just wondering whether we have plans to invite the board and the senior management of the RDA to Wailah, that perhaps the council can meet with them and perhaps we can make them aware of all of the possibilities etcetera and the hopes that we have for our community.
Through the mayor, yes, we'll make those arrangements. Haven't got it out yet, but it's hoping to.
Open it up.
Councillor Todd?
So I just had a question from a member of the community as to whether or not the tiles on the side of the building with the pictures of Hummock Hill etcetera will be demolished when the building's demolished or whether there'll be some way of preserving them?
Through the mayor, that's a matter that we'll need to consider more holistically when we call the potential demolition of this building. We've not got any plans in place at this point in time, because we haven't started to do the detailed work associated with the demolition.
Councillor Simpson?
There's a challenge that councillor Knox brought up earlier, are we able to look at starting a register for these smaller items that we might have lots of that may be missing at some stage? Should we just start a register at some stage or investigate starting a register?
Through the mayor, the comment was made, I made a note of that, I'll talk to the staff about what this we've got. So in some instances, if they're desirable type items, I'm sure we will have a list of some sort. Other items, to be frank, it's probably a waste of time maintaining a list of some items because they're not desirable and probably not, not going to.
Thank you councillor.
Yeah, and what I probably found too, as I say, I think another of the debt work items are recent, once you get outside of that area, there's not so much value of it. I guess somewhere in terms of benefits between maintaining a register and time taken to do it, I don't think there are more items outside of the network operations, but that area is probably.
Thank you councillor Simpson, but certainly taken on notice. Item 18, motions without notice. Councillor Borden?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion please. It is the council supports the local government association of South Australia's submission for the joint committee on the establishment of Adelaide University, advocating for the removal of the rates exemption for universities for the following reasons. Universities no longer provide education and research services at below market cost, but rather are corporate entities with the objective of generating a commercial return. And amending the LG Act to make universities liable for paying fair rates would enhance fairness and equality in the distribution of the rate burden.
Was there a kick speaking to a councillor?
Yes, just in that Dean Johnson, the president of the LGA, I think made a really good point that the universities turn a very large profit and the fact that there are still services that the council provide that the university benefits from, it just makes total sense to me personally that that would contribute to those, that financial burden rather than people that may not have any idea where the university is paying through their rates to compensate. So I just think it brings perfect sense and it's already, they've already lodged it. I just wanted to show our supporters of council that yes, we think that's a great idea.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Knox?
I'm happy to second it, but I think that it's probably, not at this particular junction, but further in time, I'll be there to look at some other organisations as well because there are a number of lone exec organisations that do also turn a healthy profit and do pay CEOs a very healthy salary as well. So I think that we should be looking at some of those too.
Thank you councillor. CEO?
If the wording is changed slightly, I would accept or provide advice from the mayor that this be accepted. However, you're essentially committing council to do something in the absence of a report. If the first, the start of this was that council be provided with a report regarding dollar, 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 I would support it, but essentially you're asking council to make a decision here in the absence of any information. And there could be some unintended or negative consequences in terms of, for example, attracting skilled workforce to Wailah. If we started to look at imposing or trying to impose council rates on university campuses, it actually may have a perverse effect, given that we actually have a university campus in our patch, meaning that like the governing areas, noting that the president of the LGA is talking on behalf of the government more poorly, don't have university campuses in their area. So not saying that this is either a good motion or otherwise, but I think this is in the process, if you add the words, provide a council report to that effect, then I think it would be fair to become a matter to accept that resolution. But as it is, I think you're asking council to do it in the absence of any information.
There you go. You happy with that change? At least you get a report?
Yeah, that's fine.
You still happy to second that councillor Knox? If there's no further questions or comments, we had a slight amendment, I'll put the motion. We have a movement and a secondary, so I'll put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. We've now come to item 19, consideration of confidential items. Do we wish to take a break?
Still relatively, still relatively.
Still keep going?
So it's up to the council laws discretion if you want a break. Now would be a better time if you want to proceed with the balance of the agenda, there's not practically lengthy, so I'd say.
Can we continue councillor?
Oh.
That means we're not throwing the hammer.
Thank you everyone. We need a few more.
Well, somebody had to move. Well, somebody had a move, we're going to confidential first. No councillor Simpson, second to councillor Knox, I'll put the motion. Harry, thank you. Back into the public meeting. Just before I do close it, you will note there is quite a list of events coming up, commitments. So we are in for a continually busy year right up till Christmas Day, I'll put it in action.
Including November now. And including some more mandatory training, just thought I'd throw that one in for you all.
October, September, October.
I will pass on the thought that I expressed, it was a rhetoric question to Cathy before. Do state politicians and federal politicians have to do mandatory training? No, they set the rules for us. On that note, if nobody has anything, councillor Border, I do thank you very much.
I just wanted to make a comment that having the order and risk committee, just reading through those policies and seeing their comments, I'm not sure about you guys, but I feel really great to have them as an independent body that review and make a recommendation to us. Because a lot of that is just a bit over me at the moment. And so I just wanted to mention that it's really nice to have that independent order and review risk, order and risk committee. I just think it's perfect, so.
I support you there. I think they're one of the best files we've ever had. Certainly a good oversighting us. Yes. On that note, if there's nothing else, nobody's got anything else at the time of 18 minutes to seven, I would declare the meeting closed and please enjoy yourself.